Let's, to the record reflect, reconvene with all members present. Amelie Vitale is absolutely excused. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the executive minutes of July 25, 2016.
Second.
Already discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion for the regular minutes of July 25, 2016.
Second.
Corrections were distributed, any other comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. This is our last meeting of the summer season. We will, we don't have a second meeting this month, and with a month with five Mondays, that means it's going to be an extra-long stretch in between. We will see you in September. Maybe I'll write a song. A few things to announce. Employee of the Month for August is Kevin O'Keefe of the Finance Department for his assistance of obtaining reimbursement funding from New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and from the HDSRF for site remediation. So we thank Kevin for his work on behalf of the borough. As we always say, money in, good. So, appreciate his work. An anniversary, Kevin Williams of the Madison Fire Department. His 20th anniversary on August 12th. So if you see Kevin, please congratulate him. Library, the Library and Friends of the Library would like to thank Mayor and Council and Borough Administration and Borough Supervisors, employees who assisted in making touch at trucks such as success. The event was presented in cooperation with the Madison Area YMCA, Madison Rotary Club, and attracted 1,500 attendees. Appreciate the support received by those who donated funds, in-kind gifts, exhibited their vehicles, and to all the parents, grandparents who brought their young family members to enjoy the day. And I think they also will thank the weatherman because the weather held off until about 3:00 when it was supposed to end, and then the skies opened up and they already decided to hack it up. So it was a great day. Proclamation I would like to share. This is declaring National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month for September 2016. More than 15,000 children and teens will be diagnosed with cancer in the United States this year, and approximately one-quarter of them will not survive. Cancer is the leading cause of death for, by disease for children. And over the past several decades, thanks for ongoing advances in research and treatment, the five-year survival rate for all childhood cancers has increased to 80%. Dedicated researchers around the world continue to pioneer new therapies and explore the root causes of disease. And we want to recognition to all the families, friends, and healthcare professionals, volunteers, and communities who lend their support for, to children battling pediatric cancer. So now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim September as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to raise awareness of childhood cancer and extend our admiration to the courageous youngsters who struggle with the disease. Reports from committees, utilities, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Electric Department first. The KRE project has certainly kept, actually both departments, very busy. In the case of electric, they installed three new poles and an anchor at the KRE project on the King's Road side. Most of the other work done by the electric utility, with one exception, was in the order of repairs and maintenance work. The exception is that there's a new primary feeder on Britton Street and Walnut Street, and that was just put in since our last meeting. The Water Department's also been involved in the KRE project, and they've been working on water main connections, both on the King's Road and Green Village side. And so far, pressure tests have worked out well. So, if nothing else, there should be adequate water for our new neighbors. It's a positive sign. And again, most all the other work done by the Water Department was on the order of maintenance and repairs. Regular service turnoffs for inside plumbing repairs, outside registers for water meters were repaired. There were five new meters put in, et cetera. But what really seems to be different this time around is the amount of work that's dedicated to this KRE project. Thank you.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Cannonello.
Thank you very much, Mayor. August is Immunization Awareness Month. Vaccines are an important step in protecting people of all ages against serious, sometimes deadly, diseases. Adults should refer to the 2015 Recommended Adult Vaccination Schedule because even if you were vaccinated at a younger age, the protection from some vaccines can wear off or the virus or bacteria can mutate so that your resistance is no longer as strong as it once was. As you get older, you may also be at risk for vaccine-preventable diseases due to your age, job, hobbies, travel, or chronic health condition. Parents should also check their child's vaccine records to make sure they are up to date before the school year starts. Childcare facilities, preschool programs, schools, and colleges are highly susceptible to outbreaks of infectious diseases. Children can easily transmit illnesses to one another due to poor handwashing, uncovered coughs, dense populations, or other risk factors. When children and young adults aren't vaccinated, they are at increased risk and can spread disease to others in the classroom and communities. This includes babies that are too young to be fully vaccinated and people with weakened immune systems due to chronic disease or health conditions. Vaccines are among the safest and most cost-effective ways to prevent disease. Protecting yourself and children from preventable diseases will help keep you, your family, and your community healthy. For information on vaccinations or clinics, please call the Madison Health Department, 973-593-3079, extension nine. And finally, a quick Zika information update. The Madison Health Department continues to monitor the evolution of the Zika virus and its transmission. Staff are participating in weekly conference calls, webinars, or onsite meetings for situational awareness updates and changes to local health department responsibilities. As of July 20th, local health departments were charged with case management, which include review of medical history with providers and travel history. The purpose of this process is to determine the necessity and/or approve testing for our residents. For additional information, please visit the CDC website or call the Madison Health Department. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
No report.
Public Safety, Austria, if you have any public safety and also Community Affairs.
I do, I have both. Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, during the month of July, they responded to 112 calls. They conducted 35 prevention inspections. 10 re-inspections were completed. Three safe housing inspections were conducted. 25 resale slash rental smoke detector slash company inspections were made. The Madison Fire Department participated in the library touch-a-truck fundraiser on July 30th. And again, we are still interested in volunteer firefighters. The Madison Fire Department is in need of volunteer firefighters. A yellow-colored flyer is included with the Water and Electric Utilities Bills this month with information on how to join. So please consider, this is very rewarding and satisfying, way to help your community. From the Police Department, our surrounding communities have been experiencing an increase in motor vehicle thefts recently. The majority of these thefts are taking place during the overnight hours, so please take time to review these crime prevention tips. Never leave your car running or the keys in the ignition when you're away from it, even for just a minute. Always roll up the windows and lock the car, even if it's in your front of your home. Never leave valuables in plain view, even if your car is locked. Put them in the trunk or at least out of sight. Remove portable electronic devices such as smartphones and GPS navigation systems. Park in a well-lighted area. Don't leave personal identification documents or credit cards in your vehicle. When you pay to park in a lot or garage, leave just the ignition key or valet key with the attendant. Make sure no personal information is attached. Do the same when you take your car for repairs. And most importantly, don't hesitate to call us. Report any and all suspicious activity to the Madison Police Department by dialing either 911 or 973-593-3000. From the Joint Court, as of August 8, 2016, the court continues to function very efficiently at its current staffing level of three full-time and one part-time employee. Case load through July 2016 is slightly down from the same period last year. For 2016, 10,168 cases versus 2015, 10,441 cases. Total revenue as a result is slightly down for 2016, $3,904,707 versus $410,955 in 2015. And revenues generated for the Town of Madison was $97,606. And from the Senior Citizens Advisory Group, the 32nd Summer Seminar Series concluded on Thursday, August 4. They had very strong audience attendance for all the programs. And as in previous years, the funding for the series is provided by the Friends of the Madison Senior Center and the Friends of the Madison Public Library. From the Downtown Development Commission, thanks to the Department of Public Work employees, Mike Morano and Russell Boardman, the 2016 MACA DDC sidewalk banners are now installed on Main Street. This year's Sidewalk Gallery features 18 unique works of art painted by nine very talented artists. And these artists and these paintings will be auctioned off at the Art Gala and Auction scheduled for Saturday, November 5. So please go downtown, check them out, and also check out the Farmer's Market every Thursday. The DDC would also like to thank the DPW for the recent work done weeding and refreshing the mulch in the tree wells, and they look great. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts and the DDC Downtown Concert Series continues this Friday, July, well, we're past, July 29 with Rosewood. On August 12, we have the Barbara Royha Latin Band. August 26, the Jumping the Gun Band. And September 9, the Sunnyside Jazz. Bottle Hill Day is scheduled for Saturday, October 1. And this is a family entertainment and a celebration which draws huge crowds. We are going to also have the 2016 Morrison Essex Kennel Club Match Show, and My Dog Fun Day will take place at Dodge Field on Bottle Hill Day. And also, the Madison Chamber of Commerce and the Madison PBA 92 will be hosting their popular annual car show in conjunction with Bottle Hill Day. As always, it is free and open to the public. That is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from Covering Roads, Sofeli and Sons Construction have nearly completed their work on the 2016 Road Improvement Contract. The only remaining portion is milling and paving, and that will be done by Riverview Milling, Crossroads Paving, and Statewide Striping. It'll be done later this month. Sidewalk replacement work on the base contract has also been completed. Downtown plan or reconstruction work is now complete, and the masonry did a very good job. The masonry capstone and LED lighting strips which illuminate the sidewalk are all functioning well. Prospect Street Reconstruction Bids were accepted, and an award has been recommended by staff, and that will be on tonight's agenda. Road striping at both, by both outside contracts with Denville Line Striping and in-house staff is being completed this month. Please be patient with contractors and let our paint dry. Also, on tonight's agenda in the sanitary sewer area, North Street Pump Station bids were received, and the apparent low bidder has a flaw in his bid which requires a mandatory rejection under local public contracts law. Balance of the bids submitted were over the amount budgeted for the project. A rebid will be required. And also, the sanitary sewer inspection and repair bids were similarly received with various documentation and budget discrepancies that require rebid under local public's contract laws. These projects are expected to be rebid as soon as possible. In Parks, Volmer Construction has started fencing the work area at the Danforth Road Sports Fields Site Remediation Project, and excavation work has commenced this week. The New Jersey DEP and LSRP consultant, Matt McDonald, have been working on the site remediation funding application. And finally, for the GVR facility, sewer and water utility work in both King's Road and Green Village Road has been completed, and the site entrance on King's Road requires additional work before any final repaving on King's Road can be completed. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
None received.
This is our first of two invitations for discussion from the public. This one is limited to items on the agenda, which include the Open Space Trust Fund request and any resolutions that are listed. If you want to comment on those, please step forward, state your name, your address, and the agenda item you're addressing. Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions. Open Space Trust Fund Request, Austria.
Thank you, Mayor. The first request is whether to approve a request for funding by the Parks Committee to rebuild the hut at Memorial Park. The 50-year-old hut deteriorated and was removed. The Parks Committee would like to erect a new schedule to be, shelter to be used for all recreation parks programs, including the Summer Nature Nuts Program and its much-needed storage for Madison's youth athletic program. The total cost of the project is $60,000. The committee is requesting $54,000 from the Open Space Trust Fund and is fundraising for the additional $6,000. The Open Space Trust Fund, or Committee, Advisory Committee approved this request to be sent to council, asking for their approval. And we're expecting them to raise the funds, the $6,000, before we go ahead with the project. And the second request is from the Recreation Advisory Committee, and that is to provide automatic external defibrillators for all athletic fields in Madison and CPR AED training for sports program volunteers. The Recreation Department is asking for $27,000 from the trust fund, and the Recreation Director has applied $5,000 grant. And again, the approval request is contingent on the grant being received. And I also submitted with this agenda recommendation the inflow-outflow report. You got an updated one at your seats tonight at council showing possible projects that could be still in the pipelines for this year, particularly the bleachers and the Little League Baseball Field and the trail project that we discussed last time. We have for 2015, the Madison Athletic Foundation made a contribution of $50,000, which is $105,000 short of their 155 pledge, and this year we have not seen anything from them nor have we seen a report. So the trust fund now increases because that contribution isn't there to pay off the debt.
Questions, or Ben?
Could you indicate again on the defibrillator, how much is the, what's the proportion of anticipated raise versus ask for the fund? In other words, what proportion of the total are you asking to be raised in some other way?
10%,
So you're consistently 10% now?
For both of these projects.
Yes.
The Open Space Committee is talking about going, setting up some standards, which we really never have had.
Mm-hmm.
Because we didn't need to. But now, as the projects become different and we're not, you know, asking for land from the county.
Right.
Where we get these grants, modeling our program after the county program, which is 80/20.
Yes, I see. So they may change over time.
Yeah, which we bring to the council to discuss.
Matt, and then Rob?
I guess, first question's more for Matt. Something like defibrillators, we're allowed to take the money out of the Open Space Trust Fund for those?
I think if it's used in a park setting, yes, because you're going to be there so that people can use them or people utilizing the open space.
Our language is very general.
Yeah, okay. The second question is, who's actually raising the other, the 10%?
For the...
The defibrillators?
No, we're asking for a grant. If you read the...
Oh, that's, that's the, that's the...
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I thought you were looking for the sports groups.
No, 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 no. The sports groups are hopefully doing a fundraising for the bleachers in the fall.
Okay. If that grant doesn't come through, are we still willing to commit the whole amount from the Open Space Trust Fund?
I think we'll come back to the council and ask whether they think it's important enough to put those AED units at every field.
Because right now, we have them at the MRCP but not in the other fields?
Not at our fields, but I think the school board has them at every one of their fields.
Okay.
This would...
Yeah, they're not at any other field except the MRCP, maybe the high school field, but that's about it.
Yeah. I mean, my general inclination is I think we should provide them everywhere and deal with this. I mean, it's not a particularly large amount, but...
I think we're pretty, I think we'll get the grant.
Rob?
So, the Memorial Park, I have three, three things. For Memorial Park, $60,000. Have we gone out to bid, or how do we, how do we come to the $60,000 total estimate for, for that project?
They, you can see, you can see why it was attached. They went out and researched what kind of size building they wanted, and they talked to DPW and this is...
But we'd have to go out to bid for that, right?
Yes.
So, okay. And then, if I, if I just, you know, do a little back-of-the-oval calculation, it looks like for Memorial Park, you're asking for 10% raise, but for the defibrillator, it's closer to 20% raise. Is there any rhyme or reason as to why we're not asking both groups to raise the same amount in private fundraising?
The defibrillator's not being raised by fundraising.
No, they are. There's a $5,000 grant they're trying to go for.
It's a grant.
Well, is the grant a fixed amount?
The grant is, it was based on my discussions with the place we're hopefully getting the grant from.
Well, that's what I mean. So it's like, that's the amount for the grant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously, we would love for every group to contribute as much as possible because then the Open Space dollars goes farther and farther. So, but it's up to this council, whether you, it means your decision. I mean, I think we should go out, try to go after the grant first before we then say, "No problem, we're going to, we're going to take the additional $5,000 out."
I'm not, I'm not, please, I'm not arguing the need for defibrillators at all sports fields, and if worse comes to worse, I'll support paying every penny of it. My, my question was more to the methodology of, we're asking for a 10% raise on one and a 20% raise on the other, and was there, do you anticipate some sort of standardization in the future?
Yes. Yes, that's the problem we're facing, and we discussed it at the last meeting. We have a set of draft standards that we are going to formalize in September, and then we will hand them over to council to see, you know, because we're only Advisory Committee for your approval.
Yeah. And then, last but not least, I noticed there's an asterisk at the bottom of the handout that says the total outstanding balance for the short-term bond anticipation note is $1.52 million. Should the $1 million from the BOE payment for the GVR transaction and the $500,000 Windfall Green Acres Fund grant that we got, I'll call it that, be used to completely retire the short-term borrowing? I thought that that, that that was what we were going to do. I don't understand why we wouldn't.
Yeah. This, this is actually a January report.
Yes, it's a January.
It's January, okay. I thought, I didn't notice it wasn't...
We paid it off in federal.
Sorry. I think Jim handed out because it had the list of projects they thought they might propose this year.
That's why, why did we have...
I would further recommend going back to our friends at the Madison Athletic Foundation and asking them for at least $26,000 to retire that. Because if we have $1.5 million, but the outstanding balance is $1.526, I can ask, you know, Nino, if you guys want to ask, you know, to get in touch, I'm happy to do it.
I'll probably return your calls.
I don't want to ask Brenda, but I'll ask Nino, right? It's like, yeah, okay, I'm satisfied. So then, the short-term note will be completely...
It is completely paid off.
Completely paid off? So then, as it, so then the only borrowing left is the money that the borough borrowed for its...
Long term.
For the land, for the acquisition of land and its...
Development of the field.
And its share of the development of the field.
Yes.
Understood? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We have ordinances 57 and 58, which are listed for introduction. Thank you very much. Will the clerk please read the statement related to ordinances for hearing?
The ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Monday, July 25, 2016. Were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting seeing.
I call up ordinances for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 54, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $14,500 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase 12 new signs for various parks.
I open the hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on ordinance 54? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 54-2016.
I second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Cannonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 54-2016 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance accordance with the law.
Ordinance 55, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $75,000 from the Electric Utility Capital Improvement Fund for traffic signals and call box improvements.
I open the hearing for ordinance 55. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 55-2016.
I second that motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Cannonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 55-2016 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance accordance with the law.
Ordinance 56, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $150,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for construction documents and professional services for the east wing of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building.
I open the hearing for ordinance 56. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 56-2016.
Rob? Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Cannonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 56-2016 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice of a newspaper and file the ordinance, file the, file the ordinance accordance with the law. And now, we're on to our second invitation for discussion. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on anything, please step forward. Seeing none, I close discussion time, and we go to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinances 57, 2016, and 58, 2016, scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for September the 12th, 2016. Ordinance 59, 2016, will have a date to be determined. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading. Ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 57, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $54,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for replacement of the Memorial Park multipurpose building.
Mayor, I move ordinance 57-2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Cannonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 58, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $27,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for automatic external defibrillators at the athletic fields.
Mayor, I move ordinance 58-2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Cannonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 59, 2016, an ordinance of the Borough of Madison authorizing execution of an inter-municipal agreement establishing the New Jersey Public Power Authority and Municipal Shared Service Energy Authority.
Mayor, I move ordinance 59-2016.
Second that motion?
Other discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Cannonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent Agenda Resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution 235-2016 through R.248-2016.
Second.
Any, any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Cannonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?